Carroll to Mary Castle Special Committee to Order, October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Um, if you stand for pledge, I'll leave that and Jim, your only indication?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we just thank you, Lord, for all the many blessings of life. We thank you, God, for our city, Lord. We are so blessed and we just give you all praise, Lord. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together, uh, to conduct the city's business, Lord. We lift up the mayor, members of the city council. We ask you to give them wisdom and discernment, God, as they make decisions concerning our city. Well, we ask you to be with us all. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, at this time, we'll ask for us approval of the agenda items for consideration.
So moved.
A motion from Councilman Byrd. Have a second. Have a second from Mr. Waters.
Roy.
Roy, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Um, are there a favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries by being opposed and, uh, and it goes to ten the rest of time for it.
Thank you. Um, the reason for this meeting is mainly to talk about money. You won't be asked to approve anything except, uh, the potential for a real estate matter after the executive session, which is the last item. Everything else is just to give you information. I've had a lot of questions from all of you about can we do this project? Can we do that project? What's that going to cost? We had the fire department audit and there's a lot of things we want to implement there. And I've had a lot, number of questions about what's that going to cost? Uh, and so that's basically what this is about. Uh, I asked Mr. Gary Thomas to be here and I want to thank him again for taking all his valuable time from his work at Tanner, very busy man there. Uh, he, I very much appreciate him doing this audit for us. Uh, I, he has, I can see a lot of affection for him from our firemen. I would see them meet and call him chief and so there's a lot of respect there. I really think we picked the right person to do this and again, I can't thank you enough for that. Uh, after we go through that audit and, and the cost associated with the things that we want to do and that we're recommending to you, we want to go through a lot of different construction projects. Um, when we get to that point, I'm not asking you to approve any of those projects. I'm just asking you to think about what your priorities would be. Uh, we are able to fund a lot of nice things in this city, but we can't fund everything that we want. So we just, it's just, just to give you the information so that you can go away and think about it and, and, you know, call us and decide what you want to see to come back on the agenda to vote on at some point. So, uh, with that said, I want to talk a little bit about the audit. Uh, again, um, uh, Gary and Faith conducted that. She kind of tagged along a part that we went through, tried to go through everything that was brought up as a concern. Uh, I want to say, and you all heard me say this before, I've got a son that's a fireman, so I take fireman, safety fireman very, very seriously. Our safety man with this city is Tony Richardson. He's also our ops manager. He's also the fire chief for the ten shot fire department, which, um, no, you've all heard of. Uh, but he's, is, I'll joke aside, very familiar with this, uh, this area of business. Um, and so, uh, it's important that I, I want y'all to know that Faith and, and Gary tried to interview a, a large percentage of all the firemen. I think they interviewed twenty-five people. Then they had a, basically an open time of a week where if anybody wanted to come forward and say anything, they could do that and that was basically posted every fire station. So we, you know, we want to hear what they have to say. We want to hear their concerns. And, uh, Gary came forward with nineteen recommendations. There's actually a twentieth one that he didn't number and we want to do all of those. And I have kind of, uh, organized those together in, in a manner that makes sense to me so that we don't have to repeat ourselves over and over again. Uh, but I want to start with, Libby, if you go to the next slide. Uh, two of the recommendations that we've already done. Uh, one is that there was a concern that the firemen were having to do too much maintenance on trucks and that maintenance was being delayed on the repair of fire trucks and that we should hire another mechanic. This turns out to be something that you had already approved in the budget. We had talked about it in the spring work session and we hired a gentleman that used to actually work for Gary. Can you give us his name, please?
Kelly, David.
And I've heard nothing but great things about him. Last year, we extended the, uh, maintenance bay at migraine shop on Zizzix to handle fire trucks. And so, uh, Kelly's there, the tools are there, we've got them working and I'm hearing good things about it. And if we need to do more, we're going to do more because we want that equipment to be kept in good shape. Uh, well, there was also a complaint about, and if I'm, if I'm not saying this wrong, please help me out, that, uh, perhaps a nine-one-one call would come in and there was inconsistency between captains about whether they, they might actually stop trucks before they get to the site to see if they need to roll those trucks out there. And so that was considered a concern and it might be dangerous and so that practice has been stopped. Uh, it, basically the captains have been told to err on the side of caution and go on and roll to the fire and get to the fire before he stops, uh, other engines are going up. Have I explained that right, please? Thank you. So those two are done. Uh, next item, please, Libby. Uh, there's a big concern about air quality in the engine bays. Those trucks run in those bays. I, I don't think they idle there a lot. They may or may not, but nevertheless, there are at least times that they are running in those bays. If you go to the station on Central Church Road, the guy's gear is literally hanging in the bay with the truck and it running. And so there's concerns about carcinogens getting in the clothes and about the quality, the air that's concerned about the bedding being in lockers and it picking up those carcinogens. And so the first part of Gary's recommendation was that we perform a, a air quality study. And Tony has already contracted with someone to do that. That will start October twenty-fourth. What we think will key off of this, the newer station has, uh, fans and filters that turn over the air. We're going to see how well that works. Then we're going to look at whether we want to add that to existing stations. And we are certainly going to have that in the new one that, where the bid has been let. But we want to know how well it works and we want to make sure we got filtration and exhaust systems that do the job, that clean this issue up. Uh, the second part of this issue will be to make sure they got the right kind of lockers, that we can separate the turnout gear from their bedding, from the, you know, the pillow they sleep on and their personal, uh, equipment like that so that they're not exposed to that even as they lay down at night. So again, this is a very serious matter and, uh, we, I don't, I can't tell you exactly how we're going to mitigate it, but I can tell you that we're going to mitigate it. And we're going to come, come back to you if it's a very large expense and ask you to fund it. Next item, please. Uh, the SCBA mask, uh, there was a concern that people just need their own individual mask and we absolutely agree with that. And the people that sell the mask also test and we want to do annual testing to make sure the mask fit. Uh, people can gain weight, lose weight. I guess even the masks are, are out to wear over time or degrade. And so we want the people that sell the product also test them and make sure they're kept up and we want to do that annually. The cost for these masks is about eighteen thousand dollars. And frankly, that's in the whole scope of things, it's just not that much money. So we are going to ask you to, to, uh, and you will not be voting on that tonight, but we're going to, uh, look to Jim to see how the budget's structured and see what we need to come back to you and ask you to fund that. So, next item, please. I may need some help on this. There is an emergency button on the radio, on the radios that is disabled. There's a concern in using it that it locks out the channel and it even locks out the county's channel. And it does not have GPS, so it does not tell where the individual is who has hit his emergency button. I think the original intent was a man might be in a fire, might be trapped in a building. If he can reach that button and hit it, he can tell everybody he's in trouble and get help. The problem with the button was again, that it didn't tell anyone where he is and it locks out everybody's radio so they can't talk on it. So that's why it was disabled. The new radios, uh, that are to come in, as you know, we, the city and the county and frankly, when I was with, uh, working in Douglas County, that radio system, it was all tied together. So, but I know everybody in the county's on the same radio system. These are scheduled to be replaced in two thousand nineteen. So we will stay after this issue, but right now it looks like the best thing to do is get the newer and best radio when they are replaced in two thousand nineteen. Wish there was something newer to do with that, but it doesn't look like there is at this point. So, next item, please. Uh, there, it turns out there is a special washing machine for washing turnout gear. They're ten thousand dollars. There is a dryer. There are another approximately ten thousand. I put another ten thousand in here because it's bound to cost something to install that stuff. I talked to my son in Douglas County. I talked to, uh, Gary about Carroll County. Carroll County is spread out over five hundred miles. They've got two units. Uh, one unit is probably enough for us. It probably would go in this building where the wake room currently is. And again, I don't know what it's going to cost to hook it up, but we, we want to buy that. And so, uh, again, we're going to look at whether we need to come back to you to vote on it or not. But I'm just telling you that is an item that we're going to want to buy. The ten thousand for installation is a wag on my part. It may not cost that, but I wanted to have enough in there to do it. Next item, please. There are, the city currently purchases rubber boots for the firemen. We have a policy that if they want to buy leather boots, we will give them the money for the rubber boots. They can pay the difference. Uh, Gary's concern was that there was, we had not standardized which leather boot they should buy. And there was a concern that somebody might buy a boot that didn't really meet the standard we want them to meet. So his recommendation was that we, we settle on a boot that we want this fire department to use if we're going to let them use leather boots. Now, my question for you, and you don't have to answer tonight, is do you want to pay for the leather boots? Or do you want to continue the practice where we pay the rubber boot price?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask, excuse me, uh, what's preferable to the firefighters? Are rubber boots preferable or leather boots are preferable?
The ones I'm hearing from, the leather.
Okay, good.
And but it, and but it is.
It's kind of a mixtures.
Currently, they're paying the entire cost of the leather boots.
Oh, we're not giving them the stop?
No.
Well, we certainly want to do that. We certainly want, uh, that's my mistake. Well, if you decide to fund this, we will.
Yes, sir.
But it, but at a minimum, if they don't wear the boots, who would want to give them the money that went toward the rubber? I didn't realize we weren't doing that. So that's something that is no cost to the city for doing.
Yeah, and this may be a micro managed question, but would it be by brand or by standard that we make the recommend, that they make the recommend?
I think, I think we would pick a brand. I think we would go through.
It would be by standard. It needs to meet hazmat requirements.
Yeah. Okay. But, but the thing, and I, and this is a discussion again, you, you, let's say six brands meet the standard. Are you not going to settle on one brand?
Yes.
I mean, you don't want it all over the place, right?
Certainly, it needs our safety standards.
Okay. Mm-hmm. And again, y'all will have to decide this tonight. I just, I want you to have the numbers because they're large numbers. So. And again, the forty-two hundred a year is, you cycle so much gear out every year and that's what it's going to cost to replace so many every year so that there, uh, you know, there's constantly new boots coming in. So, next item, please. The NOMEX uniforms, I'm hearing this both ways. Some people like it, some, some people don't like them. And so what Gary had recommended was that we do a wear test with a group of firefighters and just, you know, see if there can be a consensus about this. Uh, if we went to NOMEX this year, it would cost thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then again, they're replaced on a cycle. Uh, the uniform line item would go up to sixty-eight thousand, where it's currently thirty-seven one. So that's a thirty-one thousand dollar and change increase per year. But we, we really just need to do, run that test that Gary recommended and see if, uh, it's what they really want to do. Because this, you know, it's a fair amount of money and we hear it both ways. So, next item, please. This is going to piggyback on the air quality testing and it's what I talked about earlier, about the storage of the turnout gear. It doesn't need to be stored where the UV light is on it, where direct sunlight's shining on it. And it also doesn't need to be, the guy doesn't need to put, have to put his, you know, his nasty sooty gear in the same locker with his bed sheets and his street clothes and that sort of thing. So, uh, again, we need to find out where we are on air quality and then there's going to be some changes we would recommend on lockers. The old station, what number is it on Central Church Road?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Again, it needs a lot of work and it needs replacing and that's an item that's going to come up. The whole station needs replacing at some point. But, uh, there's a way to build, build some enclosures in that for, you know, to get us proud. We build a new station there. But anyway, this, we, we don't, I guess what I'm saying to you, we don't have a resolution for this yet, but there is a resolution.
Tim, it seems, and maybe I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
It seems that there should be some national standard or some, uh, national trend that we could follow. Like, is there a model that we need to look at, like a, a neighboring, uh, fire department or an outstanding fire department?
Well, and again, I mean, you heard me say that this is rated as an outstanding fire department.
Oh, yes, it is. But I'm saying, is there one that we could go without running so many tests on air quality and just copy what they've done?
Well, I think, I think as far as the storage, certainly, but I think we need to test, do the air test.
Yeah.
So we know that our air, our air filtration's working or that it's not working and that it needs to be better. So, uh, next item, please. This is the big ticket item and this is one we really want to do and I think it'll do a lot for the fire department. But something Gary recommended and we agree with, as you know, we had people driving the ladder truck not being paid as drivers. And so, you know, this was to save money years ago. It's something your administration inherited. We appreciate people being money conscious. But, uh, we don't have a title of battalion chief. They even got battalion chiefs in little herd camp. And so what, again, what Gary recommended was, was, uh, that these people be promoted into the job they're running, that if they're driving a truck, they get the driver engineer pay. That the person over the ladder company would be a captain level person and that the person that, what the, its function is captain now would actually be battalion chief. And people would have to bid on these jobs and apply on these jobs. They would not be automatic promotions. Uh, so again, it says, "Super supervisor be battalion chief's. Own duty shift strength for all engine companies should include a lieutenant, driver, engineer, and two firefighters." The only, own duty shift strength for the ladder company should include a captain, driver, engineer, and two firefighters. That pay increase for all of that is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. So that is your big ticket item for this, um, uh, audit. So, next item, please.
On this one, does this include, um, increases for any, um, EMT training and things like that?
It does.
So folks that are getting their EMT training and some EPR and other things like that that do take more than just, you know, a class or two, is that, that isn't currently built into this?
No, it's not. Um, and a lot of those things are required to do the job. They're not able to achieve. There is a couple of, uh, that could go, uh, that might not, I, I consider that it's not.
So they, both the EMT and CPR are required to do the job or required to move up?
Uh, they are not required to move up in the government. But it's a big part of what they do. They're not allowed to upgrade and increase the, you know, training challenge. They're all made of the same, we provide it. Not being something that.
So anybody can start EMT?
Yes.
And complete it and then the reward is that they're getting paid for it, but not just in the reward for completing it? Is that correct?
If y'all are down for us to look at that?
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
We'll absolutely do that. Uh, there's a lot of demand for firefighters out there in, in the game.
What I would hate to do is see us train them?
Right.
Get them the certifications that they need and then they jump ship? We need to be rewarding those people from putting in that extra work.
That works for me. Next item, please. Uh, there was a concern about physical fitness. We've got this new fitness center, um, you know, in the building behind here on the second floor. Uh, the bottom line is we're going to make that available. We're going to make time available for them and we're also going to do an annual physical fitness test on everybody. Uh, it's just something we're going to implement. We're going to implement it in the very near future. So, next item, please. All right, this, this just absolutely needs to be done. It turns out Fire Station Twenty-three, again, is a one-year, uh, central high school. It actually belongs to the county. It's on county property, but we man it. Um, this station needs to be on twenty-seven. What the mayor and I've talked about and, uh, Chief Beard and I've talked about is going ahead and finding the property in the next year or so and then including this in the next sploshed. There are several parcels that are, that will be good spots for this. Uh, and I won't go into them publicly because the price will go up if I do that. But, uh, estimated cost on the parcels, based on what I'm seeing, land prices is three hundred thousand dollars. And then the estimated cost on building the station, obviously we just opened bids on one at right under one and a half million. So I added some inflation. That might not be enough. But, uh, again, this will be a sploshed expenditure. But I'm sure that old station was great when it was built in the seventies. Uh, you know, I'm old enough to remember when we didn't even have a volunteer fire department and then they put up, you know, pole barns and metal siding and, you know, military trucks with water tanks. So I'm sure it was great for the time, but it, it is terrible now. Uh, and that's going to be our, our last holdout of a bad station. You know, we're, the tornado hit the other one on, uh, Columbia and, uh, you know, that'll be a beautiful station when it's done. The one here is, is great. And then obviously the one on North Side Drive is great. So, um, again, you don't have to decide on this now. At some point, over the next year or so, I may be coming to you to purchase a piece of property. So, next item, please.
You're saying next year, twelve months starting from today? Not next fiscal year you're talking about?
I was thinking in the next twelve months, but it, but there's nothing magical about that. I'm just trying to tie it up before it gets away from me. There are several spots out there that would work. So.
Is this on twenty-seven south?
Yes, sir.
Below the bypass or?
Below the bypass, yes, sir. Next item, please. This one is one, there was a concern, some concern about we run new tires on the front of the truck and recaps on the back and looking at it, we really never had any failures. And there wasn't a huge concern among, in the, amongst the interviews. There was, you know, some mention, but it wasn't a, a large, large number. So again, Gary's recommendation was just kind of keep doing what we're doing, but watch it close. And, um, if it had been a problem, we'd, we'd say, let's go to new tires. But it's, it's just not one that has been a problem. But, you know, it's kind of thing we need to hear, we need to check into. So, uh, next item, please. All right, this is kind of a whole culture that we want to change. Uh, any employee, not just firemen, but any employee have got, have access to HR. And so we want to make sure they know they do. And I mean, we don't want to hear things that are not necessary for us to hear, but it's just a part of safety and a part of people's well-being and their mental well-being that they have access to HR. The HR is the advocate for the employee. Uh, if it's serious enough, I want to hear it. I want them to have access to me. And Tony's in here because he's our safety man. If it's a safety issue, they can go to Tony. So we just kind of want to make sure our culture changes where we're open to that. Uh, again, these are things that Gary recommended and I very much appreciate it. Uh, but the communication, the meetings, uh, we just want that to be better. Uh, and, uh, we want people to feel like if they got a problem, they can, you know, they can bring it forward and they can express it. The promotional process is something that Faith's been talking to. I know Cobb County and some of the other fire departments and comparing that to ours and make sure we're doing that the right way. So, uh, this isn't an item that costs you a lot of money. This isn't an item where I can tell you exactly what we want to do yet. I just want to tell you, it's a cultural issue. I think that's, that's been a part of our problem. I think we got a fantastic fire department. But I think that's been a part of the issue is maybe people didn't feel like they could be heard and we want to change that. Uh, and, uh, and that, I'm, I'm, I won't go through each one of these things. Uh, but that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Uh, next item, please.
I got some questions.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to ask Gary some questions actually. All right, so we've got about twenty recommendations for various different things. Equipment to promotions to this whole area here. Um, in your experience in different organizations and different, you've been to Tanner, Carroll County?
Correct.
Um, would this be something, this sort of an audit with this many recommendations, would this be something that you would see from a highly rated fire department? Like, what hours is considered?
Yes, sir, because, but I think inherently the problems that you see with municipal operations, government operations are not really a problem. But governments have to balance where their expenditures go. And the best example I can give you of that is my experience. For years, Carroll County, hands down, had excellent equipment, but salaries weren't where they needed to be. And so you'll see organizations that spend a lot of money and, and try to get the salaries where they need to be, but they not, not be able to get the equipment where it needs to be. Uh, and so if you do an evaluation like this on any fire department, you're going to find some things that, that could be improved and that need to be improved. And you have to balance those improvements against what funds are available and what, what you have available to use. Uh, these items here, uh, the better communications promotion evaluation process. A fire department organization has to be, what a lot of people use the term paramilitary. If an off, if an officer on the fire scene tells those firefighters, "We've got to go in and do this," that can't be questioned. They've got to go in and do that job. And so it's hard sometimes for fire departments to balance that with the way society has moved today where everybody wants to be informed and everybody wants to ask questions and everybody. and everybody wants to ask questions and everybody wants to be part of the process. And so you see fire departments all across the nation going through this process now, trying to balance those two, where you maintain chain of command and have that chain of command operate properly on an emergency scene versus the day-to-day operations when everybody comes together and, and tries to figure out the best way for that fire department to function. That's, that's kind of it in a nutshell of, of the struggle. So where your department's struggling, you might not see some department struggle in that area, but you definitely would see other departments struggle in that area just because of this process and, and, and the way our culture as a whole, not just in public safety, but as our culture in a whole, has changed.
So, well, I'm, just to clarify, what I'm hearing you're, you saying is we are kind of operating on the field, or out in the field in a similar sort of manner back at, uh, back in the stations as well? That it's more of a rigid, here's, here's what's going to happen and you've gotta do what you gotta do?
Yes, sir.
Um, so in terms of that, you're, you're recommending we need to shift from that sort of a leadership style to a, or a culture and, um, within the fire department, which may then turn into a shift in cul, in leadership style?
Let me just give you an example that I put in the report.
Yeah, just finish up. Um, just, just to make sure that I'm clear, or hearing what you're saying. Uh, that leadership and culture would have to shift from the same sort of thing out in the field. You'd have to have two different styles. Is that correct?
You have to in today's fire department. And to give you an example of that, uh, previously, you might have a decision that's made completely by the fire chief and given to the captains. And that captain goes down to the firefighters. And it's kinda unquestionable that, that's, that's the direction we're gonna go. One of the recommendations I've made here is that Chief Bearden and the captains have some additional meetings and seek some additional input from the line firefighters. And, and spend some time getting the concerns of the line firefighters and then taking that information. The decision is still ultimately by the fire chief. You can't have a fire department operate that's run by the people, that's run totally by the people in the field. The fire chief has to be in charge and make that final decision. But we can reach out and seek some additional input when things come up and what we're gonna make. An example of that is the wear test. The firefighters we interviewed were split almost fifty percent on no mags and poly cotton, which is what they wear now. The best way to evaluate that is let the firefighters who are going to be going in the fires and who wear that uniform every day, put that uniform on and wear test it. Get an identical set of firefighters, and I say firefighters because you don't wanna compare a captain wearing no mags to a firefighter wearing poly cotton because the captain's most of the time gonna stay outside the fire. You want them to test identical and look at that uniform, see how long it lasts, and let them give that input. And then let the final decision be made at the fire chief's wedding. Did that answer it for you?
I think you gave me a clearer understanding of what you're recommending in terms of this. Um, 'cause there is a lot.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot in this. Um, it's not just shifting one or two things at a time.
That's correct.
It's a, it's, like you said, a culture shift.
It is.
That needs to, that you're recommending.
It is. And, and it's a culture shift that you're seeing in the fire service across the nation.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanna stress, I'm not wanting to shorten the discussion on this. I wanna make sure, the question I'm getting on is, what do we need to buy? What do we need to spend? And this is gonna take some time to figure out how to do this. So we're just not quite there yet. We wanna move on, we wanna, wanna move on quickly. But that may be another discussion you wanna have. That may be another meeting you wanna have at some point, so. Um. Next item, please. This is your, basically the bottom dollar on for all of this for this year. Uh, which is, you know, just under two hundred thousand dollars. Well, I guess the sixty-five on the pay increases, it would only be for six months this year. Um, so whatever that adds up to, a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something in that range. Uh, and again, I just need you to think about that and see what you're willing to fund and what you're not. Uh, obviously, the boots is something we could let the firefighter pay the delta on if you, if you choose to do that, or something we can fund ourselves. I think the SCB, AMAS, we need to do, the washer dryer, we need to do. And I'd really like to do something with those pay increases and, uh, and even more, the things you suggested. Uh, it's a very competitive market for these guys and, uh, you know, as Rory wisely put, we wanna, we wanna keep them.
How many people have we lost this year? I know a couple people went to Cobb County recently, right?
Four of them, yeah.
Okay, now, I was under the impression it was just a washer and it was a hang dry. So do we really need a dryer type?
Yeah, it, it would take so long to drive gear, just hanging with ambient air. It does include a dryer, and this is a rack type dryer, it's not your conventional clothes dryer. If you can hang all your turnout gear, pants, coat, boot, gloves, helmet, everything on there right forward at the time.
Uh, Chief, how are you currently drying those things?
Hang them up, let them dry.
And what, uh, based on the recommendations of your firefighters and you, what priorities do you see up there that we need to address first? And are, is that in the order of the priorities that, uh, you have?
Uh, in my opinion, the pay and job increases would be the first thing. The, the air mask, the washer dryer, and then the boots.
Then the boots last.
I think these are four top priorities right now.
So are we at the end of the presentation?
For this, for the fire department, yes, sir. We've got a lot more to go through, Luke.
Well, I like that this is streamlined now versus just, just being all over the place. And I like that we can, can see the needs of the, um, the fire department. But my question is, did we miss anything? Are there additional needs that the firemen have that aren't up there? And have they been given the, given ample opportunity to express those needs to us?
I would hope so with interviewing Twenty-five and with opening it to anyone who wanted to talk. I would certainly hope so. But I think in the future, we wanna have an open chain of communication.
I didn't hear anything in my personal visits with the fire department and all the shifts, other than what Ben presented and Gary. And I kinda confirmed on that mostly. Uh, when Gary and I first got together, I said, "Let me go through my list and you add what I'm missing." And we were pretty much both right on target with what everybody was talking about there.
Okay, so this pretty much is all encompassing, you know, of everything that they've, they've asked for. Well, if, if they feel confident and everybody feel, feels confident, I'm confident in moving forward.
Okay, uh, Libby, if you would put up then the, uh, construction projects. And again, this is not to ask you to fund these. There'll be a couple I'm gonna ask you to. Thank you, Gary, so much for being here. Appreciate so much.
And thank you firefighters for your service to our community. Thank you all.
Again, this is not, there's some order to this. But it's not, as we get on into the smaller projects, there not necessarily any order. But I just want you to know the amount of money we're talking about spending and we can afford some of this. And we can afford some of it now. I just need you guys to just kinda go away and stew and think about what you want, what's most important to you. So Libby, if you throw the first one up. This is the bank head corridor. There's been so much talk about it. We had a public meeting about it Tuesday night. Uh, the, the estimate numbers we got from George and Wes, did John Bass come in?
Uh, I think he's on the phone.
Okay, that's, it's no big deal. Uh, Luke's here. They, when they give us an estimate, it's usually a little bit high and we like that. Then there's no surprises. But I think his estimate on this corridor is three point two million dollars. Uh, you know, there's a lot of banner back and forth about what we wanna do lanes and this and that. I, I really prefer tonight not to get into designing traffic. I just wanna tell you that, you know, this is a, a project a lot of y'all have worked hard on. And again, I just wanna tell you, the cost is probably three, three point two million dollars. And frankly, if you wanna move ahead with this, we can afford it. Now, we won't be able to afford the rest of the things we're gonna talk about, but, uh, not immediately. But, uh, it's something we can actually afford, so. Uh, next item, please. I wanna talk about three green belt spurs. One is from Tanner. Uh, let me see. This is Dixie Street. This is the hospital. Tanner is gonna pay for that blue section. And they're gonna put that in. I met with Lloyd Howard and Bill Hines the other day. They would like for us to consider in some form or another, running a green belt spur from there, along cliff, through their walking park, up to Lucille in front of, uh, the kitchen supply store and across the railroad to that parking lot. So, uh...
Not gonna do the wooden bridge, is it?
No, not, it, it, this actually lays better and you can blame John Bass if he don't like the design. But he, you know, he designed most of the green belt, so I gotta say, he probably knows what he's doing.
We did look at the, with the wooden bridge at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is a better, a better layout.
So cost estimates, half million to seven hundred thousand dollars. Again, not asking you to vote on it tonight, just, just know about it. Just have that number in your head.
Quick question, how many residents are right near there that would, that would connect to?
Very few.
That's what I was, who, Houston, what, why is there, understand who's demanding it? What's the reasoning?
There's about five thousand jobs that you're connecting downtown to, right there. So it's not just residents, it's also jobs. So there's a ton of jobs in that corridor.
So people are gonna bike and then bike down the spur and bike into... You're saying five thousand jobs? I don't know what that means.
South Wire sitting over there.
South Wire and Tanner, actually, they both have, have a huge point at that. And there's, there's more than just them, but, um, you know, you do have residences, but you also will have people that on their lunch break will, will come into, into downtown. Uh, they also, I actually, a lot of times I'll run on my lunch break and I, I go this direction and you'll see people out on the green belt that have on their tags. I know they're boys. Um, I mean, they're South Wire, Tanner. And so you'll, it'll, it will get used. Um, but that's one of the, one of the things that we would like to see. And when we were planning the green belt and building the green belt, uh, the, the fault that would be that we could eventually have these spokes coming in. And so when you're looking at, but you'll see another one here in a minute. But you're looking at them from basically, you know, the north, the south, the east, the west. And it just kinda provides a spider web of connectivity. So I think you'll see, see, see it get a ton of use.
Just a comment about Dixie Street. I know we've spent a lot of money on sidewalks. And I, I know that some of the money's gone on Dixie Street. But that, the sidewalks on that street are very narrow. Or at least they were last time I ran it. Like, we fixed most of the roof bumps and things like that. But if you wanted to go from Tanner or South Wire to the square and take Dixie Street, it's really not very, even pedestrian friendly, much less bike friendly. So it's not a good way to get there. This would, I'm not saying I'm bored and I like what I see. But this is much better than what we've got now, which is Dixie Street.
I know we need to move on. I'm just curious. I sit in my office all day long, so I'm not out and about. But I, when I do drive down Dixie, I don't see that many people walking on the sidewalks. Now, maybe they're there and I... So that's what, that's what I'm asking. But I mean, are, do you think we're really gonna have this use? I mean, is there that much use on Dixie Street of people walking back and forth and riding?
Can I just say something about that?
Sure.
I think, because I don't think looking at how many people are there is indicative of how many people will actually use it.
If you build it, they will go.
A lot of, like, there weren't people walking and biking as much as they are before the green belt as, since it's been built. And I think, not, not, again, I think that's just more of a, a culture sort of talk rather than this specific project sort of talk. That, um, that there is a shift going towards that throughout the town. And I think they will show up as soon as there's an infrastructure thing for them to be able to utilize.
We have a quarter piece of trail that's not been pretty popular. I'll always say that. And we've, we've had, uh, we get good usage throughout the trail. Um, you know, we, you can track it using some of the GPS systems that people use to run with. Um, but, and then also, we're able to track it with our BikeShare system as well.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, we're getting about two thousand rides a month, which is more than the city of Atlanta gets on their BikeShare system. That tells you, um, just kind of how popular, uh, this product is and this product type is.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying, if somebody's using it for their lunch break and you're walking from South Wire, I mean, that would take you fifteen, twenty minutes, I would imagine, to get to the square. And then you turn around, that's forty minutes how you're out at lunch break. I just would think people get in their cars and drive, is my point. That's just, they're one examples. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I would tell you, this is not about saying you ought to do this project. I just, I just think you really, this city really can't afford, they can't afford to do this kinda thing, uh, periodically. And I think all of this stuff can eventually be built. Y'all just need to decide the order. I mean, what I'm hearing out of most of y'all, and I think certainly what I'm hearing out of you men, is do bankhead first.
I haven't said that yet.
Well, anyway, you certainly have a lot of interest in it. And so I guess what I wanna say to y'all is, there may be some of the projects we're gonna present tonight that you, that you don't ever wanna do, but most of these you can eventually do. The city can afford it. And I'm not talking about borrowing any money. I'm talking about eating this off of one bite at a time. Uh, so, you know, you just, this is about thinking about what your priorities are and if there are other projects you'd rather do, so.
One thing to think about too, you know, I know we, we consider this a good bit, is leverage. I mean, if Tanner's willing to do part of it, um, you know, you kinda take that, that opportunity. I'm not telling you which one to do. And this may not necessarily be the one that, that you guys choose to do. But, but it is nice to have, uh, help with funding. And if they're gonna build some of it, you know, that's, that's making your money go a lot further. And so that's, that was always important. Doesn't want to be building, I'm looking at John, 'cause I spent five years with him, I think, uh, more than with my family, as we were building the, the original, Luke. Uh, but we always looked at that, how can we leverage what we're spending and make more out of it? And so that's just something to think about. You've got a, you've got a entity that's willing to put some money in the, in the game, so.
But if they're willing to do it today, they're probably gonna be willing to do it five years from now, don't you think?
Uh, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't speak on their behalf, but...
Yeah. So if they help, I mean, what, I may have missed that part of the conversation, but what percentage of the five hundred to seven hundred thousand are there?
Well, not none. They're, they're willing to build this.
Just that, those two.
Yeah.
So that, that five to seven is minus... Yeah, okay, gotcha.
And that it's a section that they're already redoing currently?
Correct.
So they're just putting up a new sidewalk or a wider sidewalk in front of their facility?
It'll be a green belt width, width over there.
It's gonna come at the same time the new building goes in, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's about to kick off, isn't it?
I think that's, I think all that's neat and fun, but I think there's more worthwhile projects that we need to work on. That's, that's just my take on it.
That's what this conversation's about.
Yeah.
Next one, please. I'm gonna just showing you three spurs. You don't have to do any of them, but this, this is the Rome Street spur. Lot of, been a lot of talk about it, a lot of interest to go, it'll go by the new library. And it's a million bucks. Uh, you know, we've done a little section of it up to Williams. Uh, again, just something for you to think about. Next one, please.
It'll be on the same side that, that the existing green belt is. So it's gonna be on the east side, yeah.
Is there, but there's a sidewalk there. Am I, am I missing it? So nobody's using the sidewalks? They have to have a green belt?
Um, it's actually not, I mean, I think for...
I'm just curious.
No, I think for bicycle traffic, you're gonna want the green belt.
Probably build the green belt, yeah.
Well, I, no, Jim, I guess I'm, I am becoming a smart aleck. But I mean, me and my children, we ride on the sidewalks all the time. And if people come, we just scoot over and they're ass, keep riding the sidewalk.
Um, it's, it's really, I will never say, I, I will ride on the sidewalk occasionally. I will never publicly encourage people to do it, 'cause it's actually very unsafe.
And illegal.
And illegal, yeah. But, but the reason why I, I would even say...
My police officer's never pulled you over.
No, dog. But, but, you know, the same thing. Um, you've got an opportunity to connect the north side to downtown. Uh, one of the things that we hear constantly is why can we not connect downtown to the green belt? So with that said, we need to pick a place. You know, how are we gonna connect? This one right here would get a large amount of usage. Uh, this one is not jobs that it connects to, this is actually more residential. So, you know, pick your, you know, your preference.
What would be the proposed width on this, Eric? Because it's gonna be getting it back into people's...
No, we wouldn't need any rider boy. What we would do is the same treatment that we would, that we did on Rome Street uh, in front of kinda Oakmont Farms. Uh, and so we basically took the existing road width and narrowed it up and gave it a road diet to slow traffic down, which has been very effective on Rome Street. And, uh, width of the side pack would be ten feet. And the width of the side pack would be ten feet. So, it's a little narrower than the main line, but it's certainly efficient and sufficient for what we would need.
So, just to be clear, if we did this, I've heard a lot of comments about traffic speed on Rome Street.
Right.
Putting in a green belt spur along here would greatly reduce traffic speed similarly to the way it's been done further down on Rome Street? Would that be...
That would certainly be the intention. I mean, you've got, it's been effective on Rome Street. We, we did it, gosh, it's been probably, what, two years, I guess, now that that piece has been in? Or a year and a half? I'm losing track of time. But we've seen, you know, I feel like, just from my own personal experience, I feel like that the traffic's going slower. And I feel like it was very well received by the neighbors. We've got to see, I get to talk to a lot of the neighbors when we're doing the green belt, and that was one of their big...
How much would we cheap back into the road on this?
It would just be just like William Street. I mean, John, you've done the concept on it. It would look, the road width would be very similar to what we had with William.
How much would it cheap back into the road?
It's a thirty-foot road, we'd cheap it in six foot, make it twenty-four foot road. It's no DOT roads. They made their roads real wide.
Mm-hmm. Cause down here where the new, five new houses are going, they got that concrete wall up.
Yeah, it's, it's tight through.
It's gonna be tight.
That's why we really wanna pull that road in, because that gives us the full footprint that we need with minimal work into their yards.
So, largely, it would move to where the sidewalk is already?
Yeah.
Into the road?
I agree about that.
Wouldn't be eating anybody's yard.
A little bit there.
So, then we would just have, we'd have to curb and rather than...
Yeah. Pay the wires.
There's still a bunch of things, not just...
I've heard a lot of people chatter about not just traffic speed, but connecting from downtown to Hobbs, and a lot of the residents up to, up to the square. And if it reduces traffic speed as well, because that has been, I get a lot of calls, and what I can, anything that I can do to help reduce traffic speed in that area, I'm, I'm happy to push for.
That and the new library is gonna make this just another one of those places you wanna be. You know, kind of a happening area, so...
We get a lot of conference traffic in downtown now because of that hotel. And this right here, I think, would be a great carrot to use to get more of that traffic. One of the things that, that, one of the biggest complaints we get, I feel like, when we, is it's hard to get, they're, they're staying at the Marriott, for instance, downtown. They still have to get in their car to get a green belt. And it would be really nice for them to just hop over, over off of Johnson and Alderone and shield up to the green belt. So, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be some effects that aren't direct, you know, to even the citizens. It might be tourists that would also enjoy it. So...
And how far up does that go? Are we talking about into the square, or right at the Southwire parking lot, or the city parking lot?
Parking lot, fire station, firehouse.
Go.
We basically looked at stopping it on the, on the north side and the south side for both of the spurs you just, you just reviewed. Part of it is the, the square is another, a burden for another day, I guess, to talk about. But we don't, we don't wanna interfere with, you know, the activity that's going on there. And that gets us close enough to where, you know, we can have some bicycle parking, possibly a BikeShare stations and all that.
Next one, please, Libby. I was surprised at the cost of this, and John can address it. But this is a spur from South, up South Street from the college, all the way to, basically, Bradley. We used to think this one would be cheaper. Can you tell me why it wound up this high?
Well, I'm using what current prices, the most current prices we have available on the trail projects. There's a leg of that South Street that is gonna be pretty expensive, because one section, we would cut the road down to twenty-four foot again, to make room for it between West Georgia and, what is it, North Carson Street. And then from there to Maple, the road's pretty narrow, and it's in need of, you know, new curb and gutter. Utility poles are in the way. There's, there's a good bit of work getting the trail through that. So, and, and, you know, just the footage being fifty, seven hundred feet of the road trail is kinda heading up there. This is preliminary, so, you know, there's a lot of guessing to get to that number. So, I would be hopeful if we get in there and get the design, and we can find ways that complements the schedule and gets the project cheaper.
But this will deadhead it, Lucille tied in with the hospital trailer, right?
Yes. Since, since that, since the estimate was already figured in, that spur up to the train Dookbo parking lot, I didn't double count.
I got a question. I know that there's been chatter about Maple Street versus South Street. I'm assuming cost is probably significantly less this way?
Maple Street would be more expensive, but it'd also be a lot more hazardous. I don't think it would be used as much.
Okay.
And I think it would be more of a public safety issue.
More similar to what we talked about on Bankhead? You don't want a trail?
You got too many curb cuts down through there. There's just too much going on.
Yep.
I think you're better off with bike lanes on Maple Street than on Southwater Street.
This gets biked a lot already. So, I mean, I think this one'd get a lot of use. I'm not saying you wanna do it, but it gets biked a lot.
That's the road I usually take.
Where in the world is that?
It's just right there at South and Maple, right there at the liquor store.
And when I worked with nonprofit, when we were building the trail.
Going back to the college.
On the highway, you pass all those apartments.
Yeah.
You pass apartments, you got the old park.
John said it needs sidewalks, it needs bike lanes, it needs, you know, some...
Right here is twenty-seven.
So, it goes over?
Goes over twenty-seven at the bridge.
Likewise, we talked about the same thing.
Not that much of a problem.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
There's a lot of residents over there.
That's why I was picking it up.
And, and guys, I did not attempt to get any cost estimate on beautification of, of Maple, like, it's gonna be at Bankhead. I figure that's something that your, that your committee will do. Just know that's something we contemplate at some point, that you, you know, hopefully, if you do the Bankhead beautification, that you'll also do it down Maple, that you'll also do it down Alabama, that you'll do all those corridors at some point. So, that, I don't have a slide for, to present that. But I will tell you, I've got a lot of other projects to show you. But I will tell you, on Maple, we're gonna work the utilities over the next year. It'll take a year to get them all done and get them right. Just to pave Maple is about four hundred grand. It's not nearly as much money as I thought. But if you think you're gonna do a beautification project on that corridor, it probably makes sense to wait a couple of years, and we can do it right, and do all that at once. In other words, not pave it and cut it open and redo it. So...
I got a question. Since we're talking about redoing utilities there, is there a way to build an infrastructure to put the power underground, when we wanna redo that?
Oh, we...
Jordan Power's very expensive.
Yeah. We can see, but I don't, they're, they're...
Well, like, I don't know what...
They're putting conduit in already.
Exactly. If we're gonna be redoing it, what does that, what would that amount to?
You know, well, I'll tell you, well, look at, Tommy's doing it right now in Alabama Presbyterian. He's putting conduits in, because he knows poles are gonna be eliminated later. We'll see. We'll try. It's a good idea, and we'll see if it can be done.
And we'll also have good current costs when Tanner's doing a strip Dixie. And we can, we can look at their costs, so we can have a good, accurate, you know, current cost.
It's also kinda tough to, preliminary-wise, you have to get everybody to the table between their cable, power, and AT&amp;T. That's what I'm running to even on a small scale. They all have different needs, and they, when you start sharing a ditch or a conduit, they wanna have their separate, you know, you don't power and phone coming up in the same land. You know, it takes a lot of preliminary work even to get conduit in there. That's a big part of it. It would, it would be a good thing to do, and it, and not as costly as the power cable and getting everything put in. But it's not as easy as just sticking it in the ground, too. That would be good, good to work toward while we're doing the corridor planning, to try to, try to get the bigger part of it done. And that's kinda what I was attempting to do on Alabama, is not gonna get everything done, or the poles done at the time, but we won't have to cut the road and make a big mess later.
It's generally a six-hole box, about four feet long. They gotta sit down in and tie all together, pull everything through. And it's all gotta be concreted around and sealed, right? Is it six or twelve? I mean, it used to be like a six-hole box, about four feet long. They sat down, they pulled the cables through. Is that still what?
I think Jordan Power, that size, the AT&amp;T box was maybe thirty, about thirty-six. That's what I mean. You get into the different setups. So, they should have their own junction box in certain areas. I think if we got the main portion in, it'd be a big savings later on.
Yeah, I just heard it's expensive. I didn't know what that, you know, that's very subjective. So...
Uh, next one, please, Libby. This is one we've actually got to do. This is Dixie again. This is the hospital. This is a storm drain project, storm piping. The dotted line you see is a storm piping. This is our piping in the public right of way. Tanner is taking out this area. They're redoing the sidewalk in this area. We need to replace the piping while, we need to coordinate with them. We need to replace this piping. I've talked to their contractor, and asked him to give us a price. Chuck and I've gotta figure out how to deal with this from a bidding standpoint, because we really don't want another contractor working on top of their contractor. So, if there's a legal way to use their contractor, and if he will behave, which I define behaving as give us the right price and not try to gouge us, that would be the smart thing to do. So, that's about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project to replace all that.
And you're saying we're obligated to this, right?
I, the previous administration obligated you, and frankly, I agree with it. And again, this is our pipe.
Yeah.
And we don't want them to pour new green belt or wide sidewalk on top of our old rotten pipe, and then we gotta go dig it up and do something with it. So, you know, it's a lot of money, but it's something we can afford. We're just, we're just gonna have to do it. We just need to do it. So...
That's the section right there, running power underground, too. See what's called power underground, kinda?
Yeah. So, and, and honestly, guys, we do this all the time with folks. It may not be that much money, but fair out digging in the ground, they find a utility we've got. If anybody is a developer, whatever, there's a problem, we go fix it. Or we pay them to fix it, because we, we won't, we won't quality product in the ground. We don't wanna work on it. And have failures and collapses and that sort of thing. So, next item, please, Libby. Okay. Now, we're gonna go into some sidewalks. This is the sidewalk that the county, the city, and the county school systems wanna do at Central High Road. That's the existing, the old Chick-fil-A. This is where, I believe it was a student got hit a few weeks ago. It would be a joint venture. The project costs a lot more than forty thousand dollars, but our portion would be about forty thousand. The county's talking about doing the pipe work and the grading. The school is talking about paying for the crosswalk, the striping, and the signal. It'd be one of those HAWK signals, I believe. One of those battery, not a HAWK, okay?
R R F B. It's the last one. The HAWK's the red light.
Oh, okay. It'd be, but it's, be a pedestrian push-button signal there, and then the city would pay for the actual sidewalk. And, you know, it's, it's a good joint venture, and it's just something we need to do. So, I frankly, just think it's something we're gonna have to do. And it's not a huge, it's not a huge number. So...
And there's already pedestrian crossings there?
Everywhere. People walking. It's the typical mud path and the grass, and it's students everywhere in the morning. And it just, you know, they, parents drop them off at Chick-fil-A, and, oh, you know, they walk, they eat, they walk to school, and they're in the road and that kinda thing. Now, this is a good thing to remember. When somebody builds a fast food place, and they don't wanna pay for their sidewalk, though. And I'm not saying that's the case with Chick-fil-A.
David, Dan, who's taking this money on this?
Well, um, I don't know.
What's the typical width on this one?
Five feet.
Five is normal?
Yeah, normal sidewalk.
So, most of these kids are probably walking two by two along here, right? Five foot's a pretty skinny sidewalk.
It's an, uh...
I can tell you, I've been there, and I, I didn't even know what was going on. Chick-fil-A is full in the morning there, eight o'clock. They take off down that road. I mean, they're everywhere. They're all over the side of the road. So, I, I, I can attest to that.
I've had a lot of calls about this one.
Yeah.
Well, again, that was not a shot at Chick-fil-A. I just wanna say, if y'all get calls from any developer saying, "I shouldn't have paved this sidewalk, I shouldn't have paved this sidewalk," when we don't make a developer do it, we're back eating the cost ourselves. So, that's, again, that's not any, in any way a criticism of Chick-fil-A. They're great. It's just, you know, whatever it is, an oil change place, or a McDonald's, or whatever, if you get those calls, that, you know, they feel like we're being mean to them, it is, it's what needs to be done to make, to make an area safe. Uh, next item, please, Libby. Oh, this is the end of, the western end of Alabama Street at Columbia Drive. There is a section there that doesn't have sidewalk. And there is already a crossing at the signal. And there are people that walk from that trailer park to the store. And so, this is another good one to do. So, there's a guard rail there. Mike Lawrence owns this spot. There's a guard rail that needs pulling up, and he needs to fill out in-level. And I talked to him yesterday about it, and he's, he's, would love to do that. And it'll take some DOT permitting, but this is not a, a huge expense. But this is another one, and you've heard me say it before, you've heard all of us say it. When you see the path where people are walking, that's really where we need the sidewalk. And they're walking this. So, this is a safety issue. So...
Where are they going to?
That, to that convenience store, yeah.
Do we not put one on the south side of Alabama Street all the way down?
We got it to here.
Right there?
Yeah.
Okay, to the Dollar General?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, is, is the roundabout still being proposed?
It is.
Would, we...
You'd look, you'd probably lose that section that you put in.
Do we need to put the roundabout?
Just a little bit, right?
A little bit.
Do we need to put the roundabout in before we put the sidewalk?
Well, we're not, the DOT's doing a roundabout. So...
Do you know the timeline on the roundabout?
Yeah.
We don't know the timeline on the roundabout?
Long time.
What do you think?
We're gonna have to hang this now forever.
We'll be one for the grave.
When I say let's move with the sidewalk.
I mean, honestly, you, I consider that the cost of doing business. You're gonna put things in that sometimes, you know, are gonna get replaced later. We're not talking about all of it. We're just talking about a short section.
Is there a crosswalk there already? I've seen swag walking there and crosswalks.
Is that lot right there, that's, that's the one that got raised up recently? Is that for sale yet?
It will.
And I, I go home, and when it's a very depressing, it's very depressing to watch those moms with strollers, and moms carrying children hand in hand through that section in mud when it's raining. They get mud on their legs. It's, it's just a terrible...
You could use a lot, too, doesn't it?
Oh, there's people on it right now, I'm sure, if you were here. Hundreds, if not probably thousands, a week going through them. Cause they're walking from that trailer park to the convenience store, and then some are walking down, from work down Alabama to home down Columbia. I mean, it's twenty-four hours a day. They might go home late, they're on it. So...
This is bad on twenty-seventh, from the Water Works down to Angel Shop, is it?
Yeah, it's bad over there, too.
I mean, it's a mud path, twenty-seven south.
We're working on a small strip of that, but we need to do a little bit more over there as well.
I mean, coming out of Lodge, right there at the Family Dollar, going toward South Park. I mean, it's just...
And all those motels, where they live and they're walking there, too. And...
I've had a lot of people comment about that.
It's bad. That's really bad, but that's bad, too.
Those are good points, and those are products we'll, we'll look at in the future. So, next item, please, Libby. This is the section, this is one Sandra Morse keeps calling about. This is, I believe, in your ward, Jim. Oh, there's sidewalk up where, whoever that is Mick Connolly's representing, I can't think of his name. He wants to buy that, that was, is owned for senior townhouses.
Day Park?
Yeah. That sidewalk needs to run up and eventually come down and tie to the green belt. And it actually runs all the way to, again, Sandra's Senior Living Center. And it, you know, it, it'll get walked. So, again, not saying you gotta do it this week, but it's one, it's a, a worthwhile project that we could budget for one of these years.
Well, I had a call this week about a developer. There's Mr. Brown owns some property down there beside North Park Church. Gonna come see you. I told him he would probably have to work out a deal to work into the green belt. It's gonna be senior, zero to that, senior adult living situation. That might be a good one to, if we're gonna have a new housing development down in that neck of the woods, coming back toward Post Off.
So, in other words, go on down?
Well, no, he would, I was talking to him. I said, he was asking how the city would feel about it. And I said, "Well, as long as you tie it back, you got, you got some kind of deal to tie it back in the green belt to get them in there." Just tell him that he comes to you, Erica.
Are you talking about the property to the, to the west of the green belt?
Uh, it's gonna be east, I think. He said it joined on the North Park, right? Or North Park Church.
Yeah, I know the church is east. I'm just trying to figure out, is it, it's not owned by North Point?
No, he said that Brown's Pool, man, owned the acreage right in there. I'm, I was a little bit lost myself. So...
Farm land just to the west of Green Line. They cleared, cleared. Now, they had some interest in some of that property.
And I'm Mr. Go, and Mr. Go, he's got this other piece coming on up to Burns Road. I didn't know that Brown's Pool, gentleman, actually, is a property.
Kent Brown?
Yeah.
Yes. So, that, that is, it's the pasture area to the west of the trail there.
Okay.
They put something to the North Point Green.
Yeah, they did a development... Yeah, they did a development plan before the economy crashed.
Yeah.
And it was small lot, alley loaded, uh, I think it was all detached. I don't, I don't remember it being detached. But it was a kind of a traditional neighborhood style kind of design neighborhood. And I think they got caught up in the, the economy crash. Last I heard, I thought Kent had left, he moved, I thought, but it was that.
It'd be great if you could put it up on the road and we didn't have to pay for it.
Well, I was trying to explain to him, he's probably got something tied into the Green Belt to get everything going in. I don't know how much of, he's gonna, how much he thought some Cedar Street.
Gosh, John, did y'all, y'all did that plan. You remember it as a long time ago. Um, maybe two thousand and seven? I think. I think it was right around that time. So, I don't remember the frontage. Um, it doesn't go all the way. Golden owns the corner, owns the, kind of that brick office building. Uh, I think it's for sale or whatever. I don't know. He owns both, actually, he owns the south side of City too there.
Mm-hmm.
I'd say that vertical tree line, I thought it was pretty close to where the property is, just roughly.
If we could get the developer to cut in that little section from the Green Belt up to his property deal. And then all the, we had to pick up was from the townhome projection back to him, I would cut that number in half. If we could push that thing down and zone in it when it comes up or something, it was.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a timing thing. It's when we wanna, when we wanna see it done. But, I mean, we would require it. It wouldn't even be something that they would, they would ask me to, we would require it as far as we're willing, if it wasn't on there. Um, I can tell you the, the development that's a little further down, that's the, uh, townhouse, senior, senior townhouse, it's what, fifty-three units?
Two, four, five plus.
Fifty-two? Um, that's, that's gonna come a lot faster. I mean, that's, they're, did they get permanent shut timing?
And, and y'all, I'll tell you what we'll do. Again, I know it's a lot to absorb. I don't have packages for you, but we will put together packages of all this for you and send it to you. And you take your time, think through and flip, figure out what you want. Say, this is my priority. Another one say, that's my priority. And we'll try to budget accordingly. So, or I don't want to do this one at all, whatever. So, uh, Libby, next item, please. Old Brimman Road sidewalk. This is one near and dear to Mr. Bird's heart. Uh, there are a lot of people walking from Twelve for Life, which I think is right there, down to that corner to that grocery store. And I'm gonna let John explain this because I think he made the call running on up to Beulah and to put it on both sides. Go ahead and talk about that, John, please.
Yeah, I mean, the, see how far from Twelve for Life to the gas station got to. And there's a good bit of multifamily on Beulah Church. So, I thought that the, the incremental cost increase to bring it up to Beulah Church would be well worth the, the money spent. And then, um, closer to the convenience store, there's a, there's a set of apartments on the north side of Old Brimman Road where that red line above the road starts.
Hidden grave.
There's a good bit of foot traffic from there going down to the store as well. So, it's really not conducive for them to cross the road right there. It'd be a, a good idea to have a cross, a sidewalk on both sides of the road to that section.
Is that where the, where's the big covert?
Right about there.
Right in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that's why you stopped there was the covert?
No, we gotta cross it. It's right here.
Oh, okay.
So, these, these apartments here, they're, uh, actually, when I was out there looking at that, I saw a guy walking down the street on that side.
Bobby Stewart commented from J Smith and Aaron. So, everybody cuts in right there where you gotta stop and cuts to their parking lot to, uh, come back into twenty-seven. And he was asking about, you know, everybody's going towards shopping. Everybody's going to Ingalls. Or trying to tread that way from Woodland Apartments. I liked the idea that you're going up to Woodland Apartments, picked up that.
There needs to be sidewalk all the way down to, I'd say, even below Ingalls.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's where the mud trail runs is from there all the way to the bridge at Water Works.
Yeah, you got Dollar General and the two park, two motels right there.
I would like to see y'all connect that at some point. And I want to ask too about the, um, we almost all need a laser pointer. But the subway, the, thank you very much. And I may be in the wrong section, Tim, but is it the subway somewhere right here?
It is.
And they're walking from here to these areas. I'm sure those Central High School students are walking the subway the same way they are to Chick-fil-A. So, currently, how do they cross this? Uh, you just make a run for it to get across the street?
Yeah.
Can we maybe put in a, a crosswalk there too? But then what, we have to put in a light?
Mm-hmm.
How do we, how do we remedy that problem right there?
I don't, the DOT would let you just put mid block crossing, cross that for there. That, that would require a signal in my mind, Tommy.
That's already a pretty dangerous intersection, right?
Oh, scary right there.
People try to turn left out of the, or, or turn left into the subway coming south on twenty-seven and turn, turn left out of subway.
And it's so confusing, Rory, right? That, and when I'm like that, I don't know what to do. I'm like.
You're not supposed to turn left.
You're not supposed to turn left?
No.
Out of the subway?
You're not supposed to turn left off twenty-seven going up there.
I get confused when I'm coming from Ingalls going back home that way. I'm like, oh my, I'm gonna get, right here? There's something about that and I just don't like. It just seems too Ing- Ing- or, or maybe it's just me.
Okay, Libby, next one, please. All right. Now, just put this in here. I know you're not ready to do it, but just, there's a potential for Cedar Street coming. I know there's a lot of folks over the different opinions. I'm just letting you know. It's sort of like a Burkeville project and the islands will work, but, you know, whether the neighbors want it or not is another matter. So, we don't, we don't have to spend a lot of time on it.
And I met with them, or we, we all met with them recently about just trying to figure out how to fix. Because, uh, right now, Bankhead, the way that right-hand turn lane dumps onto Cedar. We've, they've seen increased traffic and we've, we're trying to figure out how to address it. This was one example. It's similar to what it did in Burkeville, um, but, um.
Well, there's thirty-five residents out there. I think I topped the thirty of them. They just did not want the curb.
Yeah, exactly. So, we, we're trying to figure out what would work that would then, that, that they would like. And that, finding, finding one thing.
I don't think they want some flashing lights or speed limits on it.
Yeah.
Well, we're on, but we put some up.
You're spot on there. It'll work about two months.
Yeah, and then they get used to it and papers go right back to doing it. We need to figure out some kind of way to cameraize what we got to start giving tickets.
But didn't we determine that wasn't legal? I thought in Georgia it sounded legal.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, just like hazemel, I go up and down it twice a day and when the college comes back in town, it goes back to fifty-five. I mean, the time you leave Maple Street, the time you get to Governor's Court Department, if you're just gliding over the hill, you're running thirty-five, forty miles an hour if you're not even mashing the gas. Time they get down to Hazemel Overlook is fifty-five and hold on for your life coming out. It's crazy. But the locks just don't work.
Next one, please.
Except for a couple of months.
Okay, now, these are all over the College Street area and, uh, you know, John, you're just gonna need to explain where they were. I don't remember which ones had to go on the street, which one were gonna go where existing sidewalk was, uh.
Yeah, this one is, uh.
From Brown to White, to West White?
So, College Street, still where the county offices are, right, right in this corner. There's the library. It's Brown Street coming across. So, there's some sidewalk up through here that goes to East Chandler Street. It's boated up against the curb line. There's utility poles that are in the way of the sidewalk. Uh, and, and just section sidewalks kind of bow, bowing up and all. So, really to get this section to, to usable state, you know, one of the suggestions was to take out that and move it back away from the curb line to get out of the poles. Uh, so that's what this proposal is showing is that that would come out and be replaced there. And then from the East Chandler all the way up to West White Street, that's new sidewalk. There's nothing there today.
So, you got proposed to, um, leave grass between the sidewalk and the curb and, and then.
Pull the sidewalk away from the curb.
Then who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that like we did on Hazemel and nobody wants to cut it, so.
I think most people.
Everywhere else, every, the property owners have to just move and maintain it.
We actually found something in the ordinance the other day says they have to do that.
Yeah, they're required to.
Actually, Kyle found it.
So, I used to live right around here. And I used to walk up and down this road with a stroller or a dog or kids and that, people come down, come down here and this is where the hill is and they just start speeding down. It, it, you have to jump out and into the, um, people's yards to get out of the way. It's, it's, I've heard a lot of people continue to say they want to get into town or get out of where they are without having to get into a car. And that's been something that now walking around door to door again, they're, they still want that connection point.
Well, this is not an insurmountable number. When we start talking about West White, we're gonna be at an insurmountable number, but this is not an insurmountable number. I didn't fall out of a chair when he showed me this one, so it's, it's probably doable.
It's a good project.
Yeah, I can hear a lot of that.
Pretty good collector for all the smaller residential streets that spur off of it. So, seems to be a pretty good project.
Let's see West White.
Next one, please. Uh, section on Brown Street doesn't have sidewalk. Go ahead, sorry, John.
There's just a block there that's missing sidewalk up to Stewart Street. Now, getting across Stewart Street may be a caveat there. We gotta, we would, it's a good story. We need to do a line side study on that and make sure that we would feel comfortable having a middle lot there.
So, that's just gonna deadhead into Peachtree Street? Stewart.
Stewart Street. This is Stewart Street right there.
Okay.
And there's sidewalk on the east side of Stewart Street.
Okay, next one, please. This is Stewart from the store up to the bypass.
So, you've got all those apartments. What is it? What are those? Paradise? And there's another one there as well. Um, they're already walking up, up to that, uh, other gas station. It's a bigger convenience store up there. And, um, they, they're, yeah, they're just walking in the street because there's, um, a gutter there, right?
Yeah, and there's a deli in that, that's probably a trap.
Yeah, because they're the, I live right, right, right around there.
But the signalized pedestrian crossings are already at the intersection, right?
Yeah, that intersection has crosswalks, signals on all four corners right now. And north side drive has sidewalks in those sides.
Yeah, there's a, there's a go path or whatever you call it right there, so.
And again, it's not an insurmountable cost. I mean, it's not cheap, but it's not an insurmountable number, so. Libby, if you'd roll back, yeah, two, two sixty, so. This is kind of, this is kind of painful. John, you want to talk about?
Uh, we've got a couple of ideas on this one. This is West White from, uh, Stewart Street, it's right here and then Long Street's over here. That's Greenbelt, say. If you bring down West White Street, there's a lot of really tight hills that you roll over. Limited side distance on those. So, and looking at that with a, with a walkway, we, we thought we'd just at least throw it there for y'all's consideration of looking at redoing the street, cutting down those hills and making better for, for vehicles, but also for pedestrians.
Is there sidewalk there?
There's no sidewalk down that section.
From Stewart, trying to get to the library or, you know, wherever. They have to go up to typically, they go to Cedar. Up and around or down to Hobbs and around that way.
So, it's a, it's a tough project because of the limited driveway and.
The first time I came to a council meeting was about seventeen, seven, eight years ago. And it was because I had a lot of neighbors saying, how do we do this? And that was, I've been trying to figure out how to, and I think the cost back then was significantly less.
Well, they probably didn't cut the road down.
It was probably just a, a sidewalk.
When you say, when you say cut the road down, what do you, what do you?
Regrade those parts of the road that have the, the really tight hills on.
So, that's gonna make us, cause us to make wa, some kind of rock wall on the residential sides to this.
I, you know, in the nearly seventeen years I've been here, I've never heard a single complaint about that road. Not to say that they're not complaining about it, but, uh, huh, interesting.
Yeah, that's the one I get complaints about.
Oh, you do get complaints?
All, all the time. It is, we've got no way to connect. Uh, people do walk on there and if you've ever seen somebody walking on there while you're driving, you're, yeah, you're either about to hit them or crash into a tree. Um, it is extremely dangerous.
So, we're talking about sidewalks on one side and not on both sides?
One side of the road.
If you didn't do the milling and didn't do that part, what, do you have a cost on that?
Yeah, is the next one the other option on this?
I don't think we put it in there.
Okay. Um, yeah, if we just left the road alone and just patched in a sidewalk where we could. Yeah, so just under four hundred thousand to go in and, uh, because there's a good bit of grading still you have to do and put in walls on the side of the sidewalk. But you just put in a sidewalk down home, you know, one side of the road, that'd be about four hundred thousand.
And again, I, I hope y'all understand. I'm not suggesting you do all of these. I'm just suggesting that this, there, there's a lot of calls, a lot of talk. We want to give you these. You can think about it and over the years decide what your priorities and which ones you do want to do and which ones you don't, so.
Tim, we've, we've talked about nine sidewalks now. How, how, who decided where to put these sidewalks?
One of y'all called and asked.
Complaints from most.
Okay.
Well, from our constituents.
Okay.
I know that's what mine came for.
Oh, Tim, it may.
Yeah.
So, next item, please. Oh, this is the infamous one. This is the last one I got on here with, to the jail. And, uh, I did, you know, I had told the gentleman, uh, George Linares, it, you know, I would, we would at least look at the cost and it'd be on some list somewhere. And that, that's what I'm doing is, is saying, there it is. So, about a half million dollar project. You know, it's, there, there it is. You can, you can decide if it's important to you at some point, uh.
This came from me, right? From Mr. Linares.
Oh.
At least it does tie to the Green Belt.
Way down, uh, Moon Road or Moon, Moon Road from the fork in the road, you have West, uh, Red Sostry. And it goes over the bypass, right?
Correct. To the jail.
To the jail.
Does it have to go to the jail or can it go to the technical school?
Well, that's what he wanted, was it?
To the jail.
To the jail, yes.
Well, what the, it's.
Board of Health.
Yeah, the health.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, okay.
The huts, board of health is right there on the right side of the jail. We're charging up on the left. How many folks are walking to the jail? Tim, have you had anybody else complain about walking to the jail?
No, sir.
Rory, have you?
Uh, not in those terms. I'd say it would be more of a connection to the health services, not a walking to the jail sort of request. Um, it'd be more connecting the, that health center space.
That sounds better than just walking to the jail.
I don't, I don't think anybody's saying, can I get over?
Somebody gotta.
We need to get them a list over there, but need to see somebody here.
You ain't got to carry, you know, school, uh, and a master, master. It makes sense, but it's just walking to the jail. You know what I mean? It's a bitch of a time.
Again, what I'd like to do is we'll print y'all copies of this in color and just give it to you and just, when you have time and you want to look at it, do and think about what's important to you. And then we'll try to build those into budget. Some of the smaller ones, you know, we can go ahead and eat if you want to do that, uh.
But none of this is written in stone.
No, sir. And the design is not. Uh, I just, I've had enough calls from, I've had calls from every one of you, you know, that have got projects that interest you and it was just time. Uh, and then similarly with the fire department issues, what's this gonna cost? It was just time to go through that with you. Particularly with the discussions about Bankhead and, and then pressure from other entities about green belt spurs. It was just time to, and for that matter of, you know, uh, time to, and for that matter of, you know, doing some things on Maple and it was just kind of time to have this discussion and, so, I can tell you, Jim and I looked at it, have looked at our money and again, we're very careful. And I don't think anybody can argue that we're not very careful, very, very good stewards of our money. We try to build things right, we try to build it nice, but we, we try not to waste it. But you can probably stand right now, three million dollars, three and a quarter million dollars worth of projects now, if you want to do that, and still keep a very healthy reserve. That amount of work will take so long to build that the time we're done with it, you'll be ready to do some more. So that's really kind of the way this works.
The splash, it can't be back in place by then.
That's right, absolutely.
Tim, before we move on.
Yes, sir.
This is Trailhead, right? Erica knows where I'm going.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there, can we add to the list?
Sure you can.
On another project.
Sure you can.
Back, back out again.
You want to go across the bridge?
I want to go, I want to find Oak Mountain Golf. I mean, that's, I know, I know George Linares is passionate about this. Maybe I will be at some point, but I get, I still get calls from Oak Mountain Golf and it's, and Bill Pond is right up the road here. You got hundreds of people that live right in this area. They would love to be of access to Greenbelt, you know, on the bike. You can get on the bike, cross the bypass here and go down. So anyway, while we're just going stuff on.
Well, I'd rather build a project you just described than this one.
Can I, can I offer some input? We looked, we've looked at that a little bit. And because Horsley Mill does have a bridge, we've also, I mean, there's also an opportunity to go out Horsley Mill and then come back down the bypass similar to what we did on, kind of closer to CBS at the end of the bypass.
Horsley Mill is.
Yeah, it's right there. It's just a safer crossing of the bypass.
Right.
And you're right, the, the neighborhood, the reason we were so attracted to it, we were looking at it initially, was the number of, number of residential units you'd be tying into.
That's half my constituents in those two neighborhoods.
No argument here. I think it's a good spur.
There's also a commercial, that corner is a commercial corner at Old Moonin and, and bypass. At some point, I bet that gets developed. I think the owner of the golf course owns it now, don't they, John?
Yeah.
So it made for the pursuit of a future to stay the way it is, but at some point you could see some sort of neighborhood kind of commercial piece on that corner.
And just the gas pipeline easement going across it right in front, keep everything messed up.
Yeah, so.
Well, again, there's nothing magic about any of these. It doesn't mean you don't have other projects you'd like to add to it. We just wanted to get some numbers in front of you. And again, not asking you for any decision right now, but we also wanted you to know what you could afford right now.
I, I really like this, not just one at a time, this longer term planning, because that's what this amounts to. It's not just jumping into one thing.
We don't need to react. We need to plan and, and plan or work, work or plan.
I like it.
So, we're also owed some money. Just want you to know when we'll get it. FEMA owes us, what, eight hundred thousand dollars?
That can go towards these projects, right?
It can, yes, sir.
Now, when, when do we prioritize these? Cause I'm sure I feel that the ones in my ward are equally as important as the ones that are.
This, this is what I'm used to seeing, is that everybody gets something.
Okay.
You know, we do a project in your ward, we do a project in Jim's ward, we do a project in Metz's ward, we do a project in Rory's ward. That's what I would say. If your project's half the price of the others, maybe we do two over there with you. I would tell you too, this does not impact NSP at all. And NSP money is totally independent of this and it can only be spent in your ward. So, so that, those are projects coming your way also.
Okay. Tim, back, did you say basically we have three and a half million?
Probably three and a quarter.
Three and a quarter we could spend.
Yes, sir.
And what was that Bankhead dollar amount?
About that.
About that.
But that's present day.
Yeah.
There's still a good bit of planning that we need and engineering work and stuff that we need. We're not ready to.
Jump on it.
Right.
No, but again, if you decide you want to go forward with that project, start it and move. And again, it's not, it's, I think we, this group of people have proven we know how to build things, we know how to build it right, we know how to plan it, we know how to deal with the public. That latter, last statement's not always pleasant, but we know how to do it, you know, and if you want to do it, we've moved forward. Something we've talked about a lot, and I saw this in my old job when I worked for the Water Authority in Davisville, the size that we are, we can only handle some which works. So that keeps us from overspending. We don't go out and hire big engineering firms and let them handle our jobs and pay them a percentage. And so, we always got something going. It's always something good and everybody's excited about it, but it, we're not overstaffed and it takes a little time and it keeps us from spending more than we need to spend. And if you don't want to do any of them, it's okay. I, I need to do the storm drain.
Tim, I don't want to dwell on this too much.
Yes, sir.
I've just been running the numbers. If we do the Dixie Street storm ward, you said we need to do that. It sounds like Central High Road sidewalk needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
Um, I meant two ninety plus the stuff, the items we need to do for the fire department, which I think's two hundred. So that's already almost five hundred thousand. So you're saying we have three and a quarter. We really don't have three and a quarter. We're down.
No, but I can tell you, if you decide to do Bankhead time, you get a design, you'll have that half million back.
Okay.
And then we're owed, again, about eight hundred thousand from FEMA. We're owed, we, we accounted before we said three and a quarter that we got to pay for a fire station. We did not account for insurance money to go toward that. So, we've taken a very, very conservative view of this. So you really do have three and a quarter you could put toward that.
Okay, I just wanted to.
All right.
But also, we need to build a new fire station on twenty seven.
Yeah, but I'd do that with splash. I would, I would get the land now. And when I say now, in the next year, year and a half. I mean, you know the spots, you know the land around here better than I do. You're already thinking of the same spots we are. Some of them, we've talked to the owners, cause those guys we deal with all the time. But I would build a station with splash. When will we see that money, Jim? Twenty twenty one? It's just not that far away.
Probably start working on the new list with accounting, probably in the next eighteen months to two years.
Oh, I don't mean to keep, I feel like I'm pushing you and I don't mean to do you that way, but the next thing we need to do is an executive session. We need to talk about the potential for one property sale and two area property purchases. We will come back in here for you to actually vote if you choose to vote on that. But we'll go downstairs to the second floor conference room to, for the executive session.
Do we have a motion, Bush?
Second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor. You go.
So I'm like, mostly, we, we hit. Um, come on.
Go back and.
Go back over session, excuse me, my tongue's getting twisted up.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Now we circulate this, but we do anything else, right?
Mm-hmm.
Bunch of doctors. I will, but, you know, I don't need to stamp it.
We can do it. Thank you.
I think that's good.
Did you sign that?
He did.
He did.
Okay.
He's got worse signature than mine.
I move to authorize the city manager with the acquisition of 158 Nazir Lane, 202 Nazir Lane, 153 Nazir Lane, 124 Nazir Lane, 109 Brixton, Brixton Circle, all five properties located in Carrollton.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor? Motion carries, all in.
Next one?
Okay, I move we authorize city manager Tim Griswold to begin negotiations for the acquisition of property on 903 Alabama Street and 925 Alabama Street.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing no, and ready vote, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries, about zero. Any more business come before this meeting, body? I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.